To order, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from June 16. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Okay, thank you Lynn. Any comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, thank you. The next topic is chapter 64 and chapter 40-10. And the topics in 64 that we need to look at is the issue of demolition and what was wanted. There was involvement by the village board. So you should see the recommendation for the change that I made in chapter 64, which refers to chapter 40-10. And in chapter 40-10, there are a list of conditions, one of which is one of which is an approval by the village board. And that's number nine, sorry, number 11. Lynn, I see that you've put in a suggestion.
You know, somehow or other, I wound up closing that window, so give me just a couple of minutes to pull this up again. I don't know, somehow it just got lost on my computer, that particular chapter, I just need to find it.
Okay.
Sorry, I've got all the other ones open, just that one disappeared for some reason.
Okay.
So it's chapter 64?
Chapter 64, 7.8.
7.8, okay.
A, 7.8. 7A, oh, sorry, it's section 7A, which now refers, which says that if demolition, demolition must conform to chapter 40-10.
Maria, there's no other adjustments on 64, right? We approved everything else?
The only other thing that I'm aware of, Fran, on 64 is item number 15? Sorry, you had suggested adding 15, the 15th topic.
Could you use the wood for anything? No, thanks.
Do you see that, Fran?
The 15th topic, I'm sorry.
Sir, there were a list of criteria from the national blah, 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 but only 14 were in the chapter.
Okay, right, and I was supposed to have gone, and I apologize, somewhere along, I was supposed to have gone to Al and asked him, and that just totally slipped my mind. So now I have to find it again. Do you remember where it was, Marie? I'm sorry. There was a whole list of things, and I made a comment.
Let me see if I can find it, Fran.
I will find it.
I apologize, this is taking forever to load. It'll take me just a couple more seconds. I guess it's just because it's such a big chapter.
That's all right, I'm looking for the thing that I had sort of, it was in 64, right, Marie?
Yes.
And it was, I had, I had a note on it. Let me see if I can fill out my notes.
So Steve, while Fran is looking for that, are you okay with the change to 64.7A? Pointing to, I'm sorry, you okay?
64.7A, is that what you said?
64-gash-7A.
Yeah, I think that's fine, yep. I'm still looking at 40, I don't, on the copy of 40 I have, I don't have a number 11.
No, it's number 10, 40-10.
I don't have 10. I have 40-10, but then you said there was a, the change was written in...
40-10 is demolition of a structure that is a principal building or an accessory building?
Yep, I have that, but didn't you say that within those...
C, so, so...
Oh, it's under C, okay.
Yes.
I thought you said it was number 10, and I'm looking for...
It's, yes.
I got it now.
Okay. And the change is now item number 11.
Right, I only have 10, so could you, in my copy, it only goes to 10 there, yep, 10, A, B, C, D, E. And then the village board of trustees denies the permit for demolition. The applicant can appeal the decision and seek further review from the village board, providing additional information to support need, to support the need for demolition. So I don't have an 11 in that section on my copy of this thing.
Oh, my God.
So, and so I was just going into the main docs and see if, I opened one from email, I was reading it.
Okay, that was a while ago.
Yeah, so I'll go to the docs one, so I can...
Yeah, yeah.
It was 64-17D, Marie, I see my comment on the side.
Can you do a follow-up on that, Fran?
I will, and I apologize, I will do that tonight.
Okay, great.
I mean...
There it is.
I read over this today and didn't really have any trouble with it, it seemed clear and basically got what, I think what Dave and Steve were really hoping to do with that.
Fran, you know, the other thing that needs to be done for 64 is the HTRB needs to review the updated version. And I think we need to send it to them in a Word doc where it is accepted and in a red line. Can you and I talk tomorrow about that?
Sure, absolutely. So let me, I'm writing myself a note. Okay, so I write, I'm now sending myself a note to remind myself that tomorrow I have to do something with 64-17D.
Okay. And the reasoning here is every, every document that is theoretically owned by a person or a board, that document gets sent to them for their review, so that we don't have any surprises at the end. So I'll talk with you about that tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, and I will incorporate the question on the 64-17D, it was 1 through 14, and then there was another one that wasn't added about landmark designation. So I have those notes, and we can work on that. But other than that, the, I guess the piece on, that applies to chapter 40, to me, looks fine.
Okay, there's one change there. Lynn, you had made a suggestion today, or it's a comment, that 40-10, number four?
Let me find that again.
It's a rodent or pest control plan, it was a rodent or pest control plan, and it's a documentation showing evidence of irreparable rodent or pest problem.
Right.
The objective here is to have the plan in place before a problem occurs. In fact...
Yeah, I was, I was just fuzzy about what that, you know, in the list of things that they were supposed to submit as, as evidence as to why you would demolish a building, you know, I could imagine that a building might be demolished if it's got just an irreparable termite problem. So, you know, I was thinking that that's how I interpreted that section.
Okay, no, it's, it's exactly the opposite. In demolishing a building, it is not uncommon for there to be a rodent or pest problem during or after the demolition. So...
They're set free from the building.
Right, exactly.
They go everywhere, yeah.
Exactly. So what you want to do is make sure that if there are pests in the building, that there is a plan in place to, to isolate them, or, so that pests don't go to other neighborhoods.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, I just, I just didn't understand that part then, you know, what was being required, and it didn't really fit into the kind of sentence structure that was being applied to the other, the other items that they had to submit, that's all. So, yeah, that can happen later.
If you can, if you can remove that comment?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
40-10.
So 64 and 40-10 are good, Fran, you and I need to take some action tomorrow on that.
Okay, there was one other, so all of the adjustments that you put in here, number 9, 10, and 11, I'm going to approve?
This is in which chapter?
In 64, I'm sorry, that's in 40.
Okay.
I'm back in 40.
9, 10, and 11...
Under 60, under 40-10, under 40-10.
The first sentences should be deleted.
Right, that's correct, okay.
And unfortunately, when I deleted it, I, yeah, great, you just fixed that.
Okay, that takes care of that. Okay. Delete located outside of the historic district on the not least.
That should be deleted, yeah. Can you make that? Not, okay.
Ah, there it is, okay.
All right.
Right, okay, Lynn's gonna remove her comment. Add number 10, Marie, I'm just gonna approve underneath 9, it'll be 10.
Yeah.
And 11?
Yeah.
Okay, and the last thing, in the last sentence, I just added the words if applicable, in these cases, at a minimum, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so 64-10 is okay?
40-10.
40-10, right, 40-10 is approved, but we have, that doesn't say anything about the rest of 40.
Right.
Okay, so we have to go back and do that.
Yes.
So 40-10 is approved, and 64, 64.7A is good, in addition, any demolition?
I think...
64.7AA, good, everyone?
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Okay. So I can remove here, let me go all the way up to the top. There were two big comments that I think can be removed, there's, Steve, your comment on 64.5A can go out now?
Yep.
Okay, take care of that, and then...
Dave had a big comment.
He's had a big comment down the bottom.
Yes.
Okay, and your answer, okay, that's... So all of that should come out now, Dave's comment on 64.17, my response and your response, Marie, that's all good?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, bear with me.
I'm sorry, 64.17, Dave's big comment.
Let me go to that.
Okay, so 64.17D.
It's the same thing as Steve's comment.
That's what we just did, okay. So that's all taken care of, okay. And then the only other thing would be, we have to send over to 64.17D, which we have to send over to Al, and that takes care of 64.
Yeah.
So 64, once I send that to Al, and then we send him the whole chapter, then that's good.
Yeah.
Good, two done.
Okay, next is noise.
76.
Now, I, I had agreed with a bunch of yours today, Fran?
Okay, yeah, couple, the first thing, can we move definitions to the top? If no one has a problem with that, I can do that tomorrow, and then adjust all of the cross-references.
Okay.
So, is everyone okay with moving the definitions?
No.
Was that a no, Steve?
I don't object to moving it, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I'll do that tomorrow, and then, Marie, what I'll do is I'll ask you to read, look at it, make sure I caught all the adjustments.
Yes, yeah.
On 76.1, this is the one Dave said was crazy, that he couldn't understand, I made a lot of adjustments on this, okay, Maria, I broke it up, and I just sort of moved some sentence structure around, I thought it made more sense. So, I see, Marie, you're okay, is everybody else okay with the way it reads now?
We're gonna have to put a new topic in the index, determination.
Yes, so that will now be 76, three, which was two, okay, so that's gonna be a lot of numbering.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a tomorrow project, so, that and 64 for tomorrow. But the wording makes more sense the way it is, I should approve it?
I thought the wording before was fine.
I thought it was a little confusing, so I moved stuff around and took a few things out, but it's up to, is everyone else wants to read it?
It reads better to me, Fran, I think the changes are, are an improvement.
As long as they don't change the sense of what it was trying to be said.
I don't think so, I think it makes it clearer.
It's true, without measurement is considered to be reasonable, the lead within the village.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
Which one?
The one you just deleted.
Okay, back in.
Heard within the village, I think is important. We, we are only, we can only manage offenses that occur within the village.
Okay, so I can leave the words within the village, but take out as heard without measure, because I moved that up?
Yeah.
Leave that, take that, is that okay, Marie?
Yeah.
Okay. And is created with the intent? I put in a couple of commas, so Steve yell if they're in the wrong places.
That was one thing I was a little fuzzy on, a little uncomfortable with, that is created with intent to cause public inconvenience. I think people do this all the time without intent, but it's still an annoyance or alarm and reckless, whether you intend to or not. Does that make sense? And is created, or, and, and creates public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm?
Should it say or is created instead of and?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that Lynn's point is, regardless of whether or not someone, it has nothing to do with an intent.
Right.
The fact that it causes public inconvenience is the, is the key here.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, making created as...
You can just take all that out, after village.
To be unreasonable.
And, and just put, and causes public inconvenience, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, and, so you want to take this out, you want to take that out and say...
Causes.
Actually, actually, you, the beginning of the sentence, it's the making and creating, not the, so, I believe it should continue here, causing public inconvenience.
Ah, that, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, that's where that came from, Billy, okay. Okay, so we're taking out, is created with the intent. Impulsive continues within the village, because it is, and causing, I know it's a long, okay, is that reading okay now?
Yeah, I think that's a lot clearer.
Okay.
There's a, there's a period in the next sentence, village and causing public inconvenience, annoyance, alarm, or recklessly create risk of, a risk thereof, and then there's an or, that's not capitalized, or did you want a comma there?
I think I wasn't sure.
I mean, a good place to end the sentence there, but...
Okay. Or, and then I have to put another subject in, if I, if I put, I have to go back to, let me see, the making, creating of a sentence, which is heard without measurement is considered impulsive, continues within the village and causing public annoyance creation.
Or the noise is heard and measured.
Or noise that is heard?
Yeah.
Does that look any better?
It does, makes more sense.
And just take the or out?
Yeah, because you can't, clearly start a sentence with or.
That's so fun.
Some people do.
Kurt Vonnegut could do it.
So why can't we be Kurt Vonnegut? What if we put or with a comma?
I doubt very much whether Kurt Vonnegut ever wrote village code.
Hey, there it is.
Making and creating of an excessive or unusual loud noise, or a noise which is heard without measurement is considered to be unreasonable, objectionable because it is impulsive, continues within the, periodic or shrill within the village. Can we move within the village, making and creating within the village, an excessive or unusual loud noise? Because it seems like it's sort of in the middle of a sentence here, where it doesn't belong.
It just occurred to me that we don't have a subject in, I mean, an object in this sentence. We've got a lot of pauses, and we've got a subject, and we've got a verb, but we don't have an object.
Is it making and creating within the village of an excessive or unusually loud noise, or a noise which is, is, does within the village fit better there?
It does, I think.
Yeah.
Marie, is that okay?
I don't, whatever you want to do.
Making and creating within the village, and it's...
Of an excessive or unusually loud noise, or a noise which is heard without measurement.
Is considered to be unreasonable, objectionable, or is... And causing public inconvenience, or recklessly created, risk thereof is illegal, or...
Yeah, but this is prohibited act.
Right.
So, we, so that's, so we're just listing them, I think.
All right. Ah, okay, okay, okay.
The lit.
Noise that is heard and measured in the manner prescribed is hereby declared to be unlawful. You know, if we stopped with this sentence and start a new sentence at or, then the, is hereby declared to be unlawful, only, it only attaches itself to that small part, and that's not what we want. So if we, if we put back the comma and make or as a small...
Okay.
Because otherwise, this part is hereby declared unlawful.
I put a semicolon after thereof.
Yes, okay, that was, I sort of got stuck and then distracted this afternoon.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, no, that's okay, because that's what I was trying to get at, noise that is heard and measured. Except when made under and in compliance with the permit issued, okay, we good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we added B, I think B was there, but it was underneath, so I put it back with A, because that's something that is prohibited. So, the way this 76.1 was, it was paragraph eight, and it was the one that's under determination, and then paragraph B came at the bottom, so I just moved that up to be a prohibited act, so. So it was on the bottom, Marie, you're thinking it's the same as A, it was in there twice, I just cut it and pasted it. And this one basically applies to, and I don't know why, power model vehicles, machines, motors, so it's specific things, and do we need this? It's also referring to a violation of 76.3 instead of 76.2.
I have no idea what a power model vehicle is.
Like a model, like a model airplane, or a model...
Yeah, they are.
Sorry, identified airplane.
It could even apply to drones.
I, I don't know.
I think this is...
It's, it's any type of vehicle, including a power model, power model vehicle. Machine is a different category of the...
This was just, yeah, it was on, it was in there, I just cut it and moved it up. Now, you could also have a power model boat, although I never remember them being as noisy as power model airplanes that are, and they have usual clubs that do that.
Yeah. There are also those little model cars that are gas-powered, that are really noisy, but this also could apply to a motorcycle, or a leaf blower.
Yeah, and we get into that later on in this chapter, so...
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm not...
No, no, I know, yeah.
Include that, it's just, I think it's encompassing enough to give us protection if we want to enforce some noise ordinances relating to, you know, loud motorcycles or something like that, or, you know, a model airplane, for example, or a drone or something. So, I've got no problem with the way it's written.
Yeah, I know it was in there, I just sort of moved it and sort of straightened it. So we leave it as it is, or... Steve, yes or no?
Yes, let's move on, let's move on.
I think it's fine.
Okay, um, okay, and that goes there, and then I just broke out the, the last paragraph, which was also there, I just, I changed the heading from prohibited acts and determination to have two separate paragraphs, and so this paragraph was there, it's just that I gave it a different heading. Proof of a violation, okay, the next thing was sort of a minor...
Yeah, why, why do you want to delete the footnote?
Oh, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I, there was another...
Okay, I understand.
There was an, an extra one in there someplace.
Got it, okay.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay, that one's good.
So, 76.3 is the next one, permissible noise levels, the heading used to be timeframes, and now it's daytime hours and nighttime hours. Daytime hours and nighttime hours are ambiguous, I know that they are defined under definition, but when people read this, I think they're looking for the times, so...
Okay, so, the reason why I did that was because if we're gonna leave it this way, then we have to have weekday hours and weekend hours.
That's fine.
We have to have...
Weekend hours, you've identified... Weekend, weekend hours, you've identified weekend hours later.
But isn't this, if we're doing permissible noise levels, shouldn't we add that at the top here? So we should have.
Or, how about having it in, in this?
I'm sorry, Marie, you say again?
How about having it under permissible noise levels, day ti, weekday and weekend? And, and I really think 10 o'clock at night is too late.
I think 10 o'clock is late too, I think it's much too late, but, um, I mean, 9 o'clock to me.
Unless you're having a party, then it's just getting started.
That's, that's, it's still, if the noise is excessive, that's a problem.
Yeah, I think 9 o'clock is way enough.
Yes.
And then there's always, there's always within this chapter, um, the ability to, to get a permit for something else through that, and that's, that's another whole section. Um, so Marie, you would think we should define it in the paragraph?
Yes, or, or asterisk it. Uh, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM asterisk, and that asterisk identifies weekday and weekend hours.
Okay, so let me take this out, and let me take that out. This is something different, Marie, let me go back to, 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 this goes over. So this will be, we're going to change this to nine, so we have to change that in the definitions also. Whoops, that's the one I wanted, that's the one I wanted, and then asterisk is 7:00 AM?
Yeah, or Fran, the other alternative is to have two tables, weekday table and weekend table.
Um, which would be the exact same, except for the one time thing, right?
Yes, the times would be different.
Um, anybody have a preference, one way or the other?
I don't.
No.
Marie, what do you think would be clearer?
I think having two tables.
Okay, so this.
And, and it probably should be, not, I don't know if we have zone identified as a defined term, it should be, probably be district.
Um.
Zoning district. Because that's what it is.
Zoning district.
Oh, yes, zoning district.
Zoning district, uh, that's good.
And Fran, I'm sorry, can you make it residential, comma, mixed use? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this will become. All right, so this is weekday. Should be all capitals or not?
Yeah, that's good, it's.
Okay.
Can you copy it and paste it?
I can, as long as my fingers stop shaking. All right, there we go. Now, I have been changing weekends to weekends and holidays, does anybody have a problem with that?
No, I think that's right.
Okay, so that should be, let me see, we're deleting this, we're adding parks and recreation, we're deleting that, we're adding weekend, weekdays, deleting that.
We don't, we don't need industrial anymore.
Right, industrial's going away. We only have, we only had one industrial, that was I one. And it makes no sense.
Right.
Okay, does that look, the way it should, I'm going to just take this out of here for the time being, because it gets in my way. And it'll all be changed anyway. Does that look good now? 7:00 AM to 9, 9 to 7, 8 to 9?
Right.
9 to 8, okay, weekdays, I'm going to make this bold.
Um, so, yeah, so the next one, 76 dash four, should be districts defined.
Sure.
For the purpose, for purposes of this chapter, the aforementioned, um, zoning districts are as defined in. And in A, yep. And A, it says, for purposes of this chapter, before mentioned, districts are as defined in 134 zoning.
Is districts a defined term, Marie?
Um, I don't know.
Um, I'm going to make it capital at this point, but, um, or should I not?
Let me see. Zones wasn't defined, so I don't think districts needs to be defined.
Okay.
But, uh, capital, you're going to make it, yeah, so it doesn't need to be capitalized.
Are as defined in 134?
Chapter 134.
Purposes of this chapter. Okay. Okay, so the other rest of this comes out right now, and so all of this comes out pretty much.
Yeah.
Because they're all defined. Okay, so mix, the definition of mixed use also comes out? Okay, so this comes out. This comes out, district comes out. So all of this. Okay, that takes care of that. Between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM on weekdays, and 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM on weekends.
Right.
And holidays. Uh, anybody yell if, if I'm doing something, because I can almost go back and undo it, replace industrial with business.
And make it districts. Business, business districts.
Okay. They always do that, there's always that extra S in there.
You like your S's.
I do, I do. Uh, okay, where are we?
Relief.
Not there. Relief, ah, my favorite word, okay, let me figure out why I've got something in here that I don't know what's in here. Okay, okay, relief, um.
Relief isn't, yeah, relief isn't a, um, term, it's, um, a permission. Sorry, it's, it's a permission to do something.
Right, oh, I would, except for at the end, where it isn't.
Yeah, but there, but there it is, injunctive relief, it's not just relief, it's injunctive relief.
Okay, so I, I missed, uh, okay, so we need to write injunctive relief, because it doesn't.
Injunctive, injunctive relief is a legal term.
Okay, right, I do see that, okay. So other than that, the other 12 or so times we have relief, can we find a, a different word? I just, I just found it sort of a strange word, and maybe that was because it was, it was, um, replacing permit. And I wasn't sure, but it's, yet it seemed like everything that I was reading, it almost was a permit, or an exemption, or something. Steve, I know you had asked about whether we should capitalize it, and it's not defined, it's just sort of a generic word. Um, but like, we're at 76 eight.
Yep.
Maybe further than vehicular traffic. On the basis of one, other than, from the noise designation level, um. I mean, if everyone's fine with it, I'm good, we can leave it, if it, if it makes sense to everyone, it just sounded a little bit sort of vague to me.
Yeah, I think the whole notion of relief is kind of vague in this application. You know, it may be a legal term, but I don't think it's something that is obvious to everybody. Uh, let me just check something here.
Fran, about seven or eight lines down, starts off with authorized representative hereunder shall be on a format, and I think it should be in a format.
Uh, okay, should be. Got it.
Yes, you got us.
Can do that one. We can do that one, if I clean some of this up, maybe we can read it better. Leave that one for a minute, and.
Would endorsement be a better word?
You know, it's something that has to be, the request for it has to be made to the code enforcement officer.
Right.
So relief, so a request for, request for relief from the, from the requirements of this, I mean, this is too long, I know, but we're requesting relief from the, um, from the other restrictions of this code, basically.
What about requests for exemptions?
Yeah, I would, I would, something like that, or exceptions, or exemptions, or temporary exemption, or. Or relief for other than, uh, may be made, relief may be made, I would say request, because it originally said application for a permit, so can we say application for relief? Or request for, application for relief? Uh, is, is it going to be, it looks like, because it has to go through the code enforcement officer, that it's going to be an actual piece of paper of some sort or other. So is it going to be an application for relief? Does that sound better?
That was better.
Marie, is that okay?
What do you?
I'm, I'm thinking of.
So 76 dash eight would become application for relief?
No, 76 dash eight could say relief, but then A would say, an application for relief for other than vehicular may be made to the code enforcement officer.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Relief is not defined, so it's a smaller, okay. This comes out. The relief would be grant, okay, so that's sort of, for many prohibition. Permit with relief. Any relief granted by the code enforcement officer, is or her. Said, relief granted. Okay, code enforcement officer. Okay, uh, and then the code enforcement officer, he or she. This is good. Uh, a permit has been issued in accordance with, okay, is unlawful to operate a play while, uh, nine, between 9:00 PM and 10:00 AM in parks. Are those hours still good?
Yes.
Okay, unless.
Because these are, these are outside of the, they specifically apply to radios, televisions, musical instruments, and similar devices.
Okay, and also it specifically applies to parks, playgrounds, or recreation areas.
Right.
Okay. So there's no permit coming into that, okay.
Is this something that I should add to the, um, the license slash permit application form? Um, one of the options that they might be applying for?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't, and I don't think so, I think, yeah, that, I mean, anything in a park or something would be for a wedding, and we've got that whole application, like with the parks. Or some kind of an event like that, okay. Neighborhood changes to business.
Businesses operating in business districts. Or as a pre-existing legal, non-conforming use within or adjacent to residential or mixed-use districts. Not zones, mixed-use districts.
Yes. Upon initial determination of a violation. A business will be given three months to comply with the term, business owner. Okay.
Okay, under power equipment, need to change that to 9:00 PM.
Right.
And 9:00 PM on weekends and holidays.
And also, between the hours of. Okay, examples of power equipment includes, but is not limited to, shall be unlawful to operate or permit to be operated, any, okay. All right, during daytime hours, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Weekends and holidays, all this decimal stuff, I didn't, I didn't cross-reference, it was way over my head. I assume that whoever wrote this ahead of me knows this better than I do. Um, yeah, I, I was, um, the reason why I asked about hardship exemption for this, this, this area seemed to me to be sort of strict machinery, fans and air conditioners, and shall be unlawful to operate, blah, 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 stationary, number two, stationary machinery, equipment, fans and air conditioner shall have the following replacement schedule. Uh, is that because they're noisy, or just in general? So if you have an air conditioner in your home, now, I don't know, is this, is this, is not necessarily still under businesses?
Look at, number one, the reason this is here, it shall. Number one, the reason is this is here, it shall be unlawful to operate any stationary, blah, blah, blah. So as to exceed the permissible noise level.
Right.
Okay, so if you have something that is exceeding the permissible noise level, then-
And if it, if it's 10 years old or older, you have to replace it within six months. Now, if I'm, if I have an air conditioner in my-
Upon determination of a violation condition.
Okay, so, but if your noise level is over a certain amount, that would be, I would assume, a violation.
That, that is correct. That's correct.
My old air conditioner is making noise, but it still helps me to stay cool and I don't have money to buy a new one.
As long, as long as your, your old air conditioner is not exceeding the permissible noise levels, you're fine.
But if it is, I have to go in, within six months, buy a new one.
Yep.
See, I thought that was kind of harsh, that's why I asked about a hardship exemption. Uh, typically, I would think, um, you know, I'm just thinking of someone who doesn't, you know, an elderly person or someone who doesn't have a lot of money, has an old air conditioner, it's noisy. You know, and you're gonna say, in, you know, within six months, you either have to buy a new one or we, you have to shut that one down because it's too noisy.
Right.
So what, can I come back and say, hey, listen, I'm, listen, I'm living off my social security, I can barely make my ends meet, I can't afford to buy a new one.
Okay, so don't run it.
I know, but I'm 80 and I'm hot and I, you know, my doctor says I need this.
You should be 80 and cold.
If you're 80, you should just do it anyway.
If you're 80, you should just do what?
Yeah.
Just run it anyway, say the heck with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my question on this, um, you know, I just, I-
The decibel levels are pretty high.
Yeah, see, I have no concept.
What if you just move upon determination of a violation condition to that out of A but back up to the heading? Stationary machinery, equipment, fans and air conditioners shall have the following replacement schedule upon determination of a violation condition. That way, it's clear from the get-go that, you know, you don't have to replace it if it's 10 years old or older and not making a noise.
Oh, I know, I, I understand that, but I mean, I also, uh, you know, a 10-year-old air conditioner maybe makes a lot of noise, and I have no concept, as I say, of what, what the noise levels are. And so, you know, maybe no air conditioner, old will make that much noise unless I drop it out, which I have done, drop it out the window.
Okay, so, so how about, so how about this? So machinery, fans and air conditioners, it shall be unlawful to operate or permit the operation of in such a manner as to exceed the permissible noise levels of 76-3 when measured on receiving property. And then delete the replacement schedule.
Yeah.
That works fine, yeah, that's better, I mean, and that was just basically saying you can't do it, yeah, I thought the replacement schedule was sort of weird. So just take this whole thing out. Um, so, just take that whole thing out.
Yeah, now, that will change what three says.
Um, right.
Really, if you've got an air conditioner that make, that's making that much noise, that your neighbors are complaining?
Yeah.
Probably something wrong with it and it's not working anyway.
I would delete number three as well, Fran.
Okay, shall we enter? Okay, that comes out and so. Okay, so basically, we're saying it's unlawful for operator permit to, the operation of any stationary machinery, air conditioner and such a manner as to, okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, me too.
That out, taking that out. Now, that means that we take this number out and we move this back over there, nope. Let me do that again.
Okay, we don't have any quiet, noise-sensitive quiet zones in the village. What happened to? Uh, don't delete A.
Don't delete what?
Delete 76-10A.
No, I'm not down to the, okay, I'm, I'm still up in noise-sensitive. Okay, no. Take care of this, this. Give me a second to get more of this junk out of here.
So domestic power tools, lawn mowers and agricultural equipment should not be exempt.
Exemptions, all their exemptions.
Be deleted.
Yes, okay, definitely, okay. Uh, and it takes care of that. Okay, follow your exam noises resulting from emergency vehicles, safety signals and alarm devices, storm warning issues, storm warning sirens, however, regarding burglar alarms, burglar alarms after 30 minutes is fine, um. Those are made during the parade or concert sponsored by the village or for which relief has been, okay, I'm okay. It doesn't have to be capitalized. Relief. Any noise resulting from activity of the temporary duration for which relief has been granted. Uh, noises from non-applified church bells, interstate railroad, sporting events, I added on the sporting events.
Yeah, fine.
Basically, you know, the, okay, everybody's good with that, or any events? And emergency construction.
Should we include something in emergency construction, um, like, to address the noise that might come from having to repair? You know, like, I'm, I'm just imagining that time that Greg was like knee-deep in icy water and in the middle of the night and people were complaining about the noise of fixing the water main. Uh, should we add some- determined by the village or the village, you know, village departments and by the code enforcement officer?
I, I would, yeah, because the code enforcement officer wasn't involved with that, but it was an emergency construction.
You know, add some provision for, um, village employees, like the highway or the, uh, water and wastewater department?
Okay, so what if we say emergency construction is determined by, um, emergency village situat-
So leave I, leave I as it is, put a period at the end of H, put a period at the end of I, and now J.
Go ahead.
Emergency construction required by the village of Cold Spring.
Sure, I could do this.
How about emergency activities required by the village of Cold Spring?
Now, village is defined, right, so should I just leave a village?
By the village, period.
Period.
Right.
Thanks for adding that.
Thank you. You didn't light them up to their neck in frozen water, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, Marie, your comment penalties for offenses, the amount of fines could be, did you want to add this someplace or?
No, um, I thought someone commented at some point that these fines were not appropriate. Do you, does, do people think they are appropriate?
I think they're fine.
Okay.
No, this is fine, so they get put in the code and they're not fees, which is a separate fee schedule, right?
That is correct.
Okay, got it, I, I'm fine with these fines.
Okay.
Like, there's enough wiggle room in there, that, you know, if it's really, really bad, we could give, you know, give them a bad fine, and if it's just an annoyance, you know, there's enough wiggle room in there to-
These, um, these code offenses get a ticket, then they have to go before the judge, right? So this would be his call?
Yeah.
Between 50 and 2, okay, so I'm, you know, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, we're good. Okay. Code enforcement officer or the police department. Do we need to define injunctive relief or just assume that that's?
I would just leave it as it is.
Okay.
People can Google it like I had to.
I, I just missed the injunctive and just got to relief and I was good.
Okay, on daytime hours in the definitions, Fran, daytime hours become 9:00 PM.
Okay. Whoops. My screen tends to want to jump when I want it to move slowly.
You want me to make the change?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Nine. Weekday hours. Nine. Okay, that's good, that's good. Weekdays and holidays, anyways. Any dismantlings?
And then again, under nighttime hours.
Right.
I lost my place, where are we again?
We're in the definition 76-15.
Oh, okay.
Okay, noise-sensitive areas comes out because we don't have any.
Right.
Okay, so that comes out. Now, there's a separate, um, okay, the village is defined, that's good. This, when I read motorcycles and off-highway motor vehicles, in the beginning, I was confused because I'm thinking motorcycles being the motorcycles that drive along the highways, the streets. But that's not what we're talking about here, right?
And you are?
Dirt bikes.
More like, yeah, more like dirt bikes, um.
And motorcycles and off-highway motor vehicles.
Right, and, and A1, the vehicle board finds a driving, riding and use of motorcycles, motor-driven vehicles, off-highway motor vehicles on public and private property is the cause of noise and dust and blah, 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 and is therefore, when we get down to it, illegal. Now, motorcycles are not the motorcycles that go racing around the streets all the time. They're more like a dirt bike or, uh, um.
Actually, no, these are motorcycles.
Yeah, it says public and private property.
I know, but I will read through it, um, because the content may be intermittent, I understand that provisions of this relate to the regulation of motorcycles on, off-highway, is therefore necessary for the public welfare.
So if you have a yard big enough to ride motorcycles, then you need to be a certain distance away from your neighbors to do it.
Then I read, but it also says, um, sections of my plan. General police power. So you're basically saying, like, you can't ride a motorcycle off the street.
Just can't do it loudly.
You can't do it loudly off the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have a motorcycle and you're riding it on the street and it exceeds the decibel rating, you get-
Okay, why was I, I must have been brain dead when I was reading this, it may be intermittent.
How old is this code?
I think 70s.
Yeah, because they used to ride dirt bikes in the battery plant.
93, 1993.
Yeah, because there, people used to ride bicycles and dirt bikes in the battery plant lot, because it was all dirt and sand. And it, I'm sure it was pretty loud for the people that lived around it, you know?
Like on Constitution Drive.
Exactly, where I live.
Yes.
So maybe that's what it was from.
Okay. So this is good.
Okay, definitions, okay, so other than the fact that I'm gonna move a paragraph around and then renumber everything, um, we can declare seven.
Yeah, I'll read it over tomorrow and then we'll jointly declare it done.
Perfect. Okay. Marie, what do we do? Okay, we did 40, 60, 476, 93.
Hey, Fran, your first comment about, uh, moving things around. Take, there's source preparation. Sorry, uh. There's source preparation required and then there's source preparation. It seems to me they should all be, they should be one.
Okay, where's my first comment, uh? Wait, let me go down.
So source, for, source separation.
Required. And then source preparation.
Right.
So you think that should go, go to, all right, okay.
Actually, no, no, I'm sorry, I was wrong. Um, there's preparation of recyclables for collection, 93-8.
Yes.
To me, that 93-8 and 93-5 should be together.
Okay, I remember making that comment. Right, section should be moved, so, um, does that make sense or no? I wanted to move 93-8 to in between, below 93-5 and above 93-6.
I, I just think they should be merged.
Okay, I mean, anything is better than having this hanging out at the bottom. I'm gonna move it for the time being and then, um, we can, we can work on the merger. Okay, let me just move this. So I'm gonna move 93-8, which used to be 93-7, up to between, this is another one. Between five and six. So it sort of goes right. Okay. It says source preparation and preparation of recycle, recyclables for collection, and these two can be merged into one, right?
I think so.
This is a paragraph that was added in 2000? Okay, I can just, so shall I just take out the heading 93-8?
Yes.
Whoops, didn't want to do that, hang on for a second. Take this out. Delete. All right.
Now, renumber.
All right, let me just-
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this is okay. Get rid of this, get rid of this.
So, the second A should become G.
Right, okay, gotcha. All right, I know there's a way to do this nicely. And then there's a way to cheat and do it.
Cheat.
There we go, huh? That's not even good. How's that?
Very good. In E, in E, delete the C93-5C at the end.
Okay.
And F is, um, F is the same as C.
I'm a mirror, must be kept dry. Okay. Should be putting, okay, so do it, just keep.
Before you, before you delete it, C says cardboard, paper, and paper products must be kept dry, period. To assure they stay dry, they should be put in covered containers without past plastic bag liners.
So you want to just add that?
Yeah.
To see?
Yeah.
All right, okay. If I'm going too fast for anybody, please yell.
Whoops.
What did I do?
You lost something.
Back up. Reverse your, reverse your change. Okay.
There you go.
Okay, so I want to take this out. And I want to put it here.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to get rid of that. And I want to, uh, and take that. I'm just going to go back up and prove some of this stuff. Add to list two times, that looks good. All right, let me just do something up here before I forget. Uh, this comes out, this comes out. Okay. All right, we added source preparation, replace five with six. Six with seven, place seven with eight. This is another one that has to be renumbered and checked.
Yeah.
Okay. List of recyclables is filed, okay, the list of recyclables is filed with the village clerk. It can be obtained at the village office. Uh, so we're going to take out the whole list, right?
Yeah.
But we, we need to get a list. That would be helpful.
Well, it's, it's, um, B, C, D, and E.
Right. Tires and white goods were never, not here anyway.
Yeah, they were.
Were they?
At some point.
Okay. Dave is asking, can we add somewhere failure to comply to, we're at 93.5. Failure to comply, maybe in C above will result in no collection by the highway department?
That's problematic.
I don't think it would result in no collection. Can there be a fine? I don't even know if there's a fine.
I think what will happen, at least I saw it happen a couple of weeks ago, um, if the materials are not collected, they remain on the street.
Yeah, and I, and I asked Bugsy about that, as a matter of fact, yet, this morning or yesterday. He said if somebody leaves, if they put out recyclables in a plastic bag and you guys don't pick it up, they're going to leave it on the street and expect that you're going to pick it up on Tuesday.
Yep.
He said if the, if the guys can tell that it's like bottles or cans or something, they won't touch it. Um, we need to have some kind of a flyer or a sticker that they can stick on the bag that says, you know, tells people why they're, why we're not picking them up. Maybe a sticker that they can put on, a big one, that basically says we can no longer collect anything in plastic bags and put it on the bag. Because people will just leave it there and then assume that nobody's picking them up on them or, you know, leave it and hope you'll pick it up the next round.
And they will pick it up at the next round, of the garbage.
Right, but if it's recyclable stuff and they're picking it up with garbage, it's just costing us more.
Actually, it's costing us less.
It's costing us about the same, but.
Actually, the recycle costs have gone down.
Have they gone down again?
They're under, they were under 70, they were under $80, um, at the last review.
Which is, which is not bad because they were going continually up for a long time.
Yeah.
Not collecting recyclables, well, my opinion is otherwise that, we probably pick up the next garbage. Okay, so, um, I think a fine associated with incorrect, you know, I, I think that's something that maybe we could add at another time.
It's already in there. Look at 90, 93-6. Any person who violates any provision of this chapter, chapter should be capitalized. I've just changed it.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the, the fines are there. The question is, who's going to issue them an appearance ticket?
Right, and how are you going to know for sure whose garbage it is? So at this point, I don't think we can do much else. I would like to see some kind of a sticker or something on the bags and notify people. You know, it doesn't have to be elaborate. There don't have to be a lot of them, but, you know, if you're not picking it up, stick a sticker on it. So this way, our guys will know not to pick up that bag the next time around either.
Well, I mean, that, it also goes, sorry, the problem also occurs with cardboard, paper, and paper products, which are not. I suspect Bugsy's still picking them up.
Which are not what?
Which are not kept dry.
I know, and at this point, we haven't determined, um, you know, we haven't been clear with that. We need to be clearer. We were, we were pretty clear about the non-plastic bags. And, and people, most people seem to be doing it. We just need to be clearer about that and come up with some more, you know.
That is very difficult, very, very difficult to do for the businesses.
I know it is, but, um.
Two by two by three is small. And, and then you have to have some sort of a container to put them in.
Yeah, if you don't put them in a plastic, if you put them in a plastic bag, they won't take them. I mean, you know. So, so that's.
It's, it's very problematic. I, I also, I, I think that the recommendation to put recyclables in paper bags is, is again, very problematic. You put out three wine bottles in a paper bag, it rains, the next day, they pick them up, the bottom gives way. And you've got broken glass.
Yeah, but, you know, other than brush, which I know is an issue, you can just put recyclables in a, in a garbage can without, without lining. And I mean, we put ours in an empty garbage can. You don't have to put it in a paper bag.
Yeah, but the recommendation here is that, um, recyclables can be put out in paper bags.
Or recycle, recycle containers.
Well, why don't we just take the paper bag part out?
Right.
No recycling, but why don't we just take that whole last sentence out? I mean, I realize I put it in.
Yeah. It's all right with me.
You can take that out.
It's fine with me, Fran.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so other than that, the rest of this, I believe, uh, probably has to do more with Dave's comment. But I just clear his comment. I know he's looking for some kind of a failure to comply.
Well, the failure to comply, there is a fine already stated.
Right. And I think, I think we're just going to have to leave it at that at this point.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what else we can do, so we'll clear this up.
Yeah.
Recyclable containers. I don't know why this is highlighted, but. Okay, Lynn said, might this be clear if it read containers of recyclables or just recycle containers? Recyclable, yeah, but it's not a recyclable container. It's containers for recyclables. Anybody, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
As in B. Who's eating?
So what are you saying?
Lynn, you're saying as used in B, but I don't see where in B.
First two words.
Right.
In D, in, indoor, 93-5 door. So, so recyclables.
That's it, yeah, recyclable containers.
How about just recycle?
That, I think.
Recycling.
Recyclables in containers.
Or recycling.
That you're holding it in.
Recyclables in containers.
I think that, yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
That's good.
Recyclables in containers. She'll be sent off a cautionary, okay, let's take care of that one. So we took this out. And then we have enforcement at the end. Should be administered enforcement, the village of Colesby, hiring crew chiefs, the village of Colesby enforcement officer, and the village of Colesby police department. That's fine. Anybody problems with any of that?
No.
Okay. So this just has to be renumbered and this is good to go.
Right, you're going to send it to me and I'll reread it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I'll just make the adjustments right through Google Docs, right, Marie?
Yeah.
Okay, and sewer is 97. What time are we done, Marie? 8:30?
8:30.
Okay. Sewers.
Dave is fine with this.
Good. Nice work.
The reason he's fine with it, it has been reviewed by John first and by P and D.
Okay.
So he feels that, um, the, um, this has been vetted by the people who, um, who know. Okay, so the first topic for sewers, and it's also true for rent, for water. Village employees, uh, the water and wastewater and highway do not have identification. They don't have badges that identify themselves as employees of the village. And as a result, they have been denied entry into certain structures. So the first thing I would do is recommend that the village generate badges that identify by name with a photo, um, each of the members of the water and sewer and highway departments.
Do we need to, um, I think that's a great idea. Do we need to get one of those camera things on our computer to do that or, 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 I'm sure there's an app we could do it with or something?
I don't know, I'll check with Jeff.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think they absolutely should have something. It's crazy. And then we have to make sure that when they're no longer working, that they give it back.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
In the code, not necessarily.
No, doesn't need to go into the code.
Okay. Okay, so Marie's going to ask about that. Okay, um, so on this chapter, we're, uh, the first thing I see is we added 9717, inspection prior to connection. We added 9719, I'm just going to go through. Yeah, this, this was an endless chapter.
This is not the worst.
I mean, oh, I know 134 is pathetic, but, uh, not bad though, I mean, I got through them. I did nothing else for the past week. Okay, entry on easement. I'm just approving that the sections that were added.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the state department of.
Environmental conservation. Fran, you had, um, identified the acronym later on in the chapter. I've moved it earlier in the chapter so that it can be referenced by acronym from this point on.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Okay, add building connection lateral. As I said when I read this, it wasn't a lot of this stuff that made a lot of sense. Um, sanitary. Uh, there wasn't, I know I had a question about defining sanitary sewer, maybe I didn't put the question.
Well, there, this is, um, under building drains, there are two, there are two different types of building drains. One is a storm drain and the other is a sanitary.
Well, yeah, what I, what I want, was wondering, is there a definition of sewer, sewage versus, versus sanitary sewage? Are they two different things? One definition, it says also known as sewage or sanitary sewage, so it might be the same thing and, and are those two terms used interchangeably? And I'll basically, you know, probably get to it, like, for example, uh, the definition in building storm sewer says sanitary sewage, uh, and most of these definitions talk about sanitary sewage.
Right, right. And at this point, since these have been reviewed by so many people, I would prefer that we not, that we, I would prefer that we don't change the word usage.
Okay. Okay, this is good. I'm just, I want to go out of this, it's just formatting. The building connection lateral pipe, okay, that comes out. Okay, in this one, um, in, um, the, in the definition of public sanitary sewer, you're okay with taking the word sanitary out?
No. Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
That's the one that makes it a circular definition, so we're okay with removing that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this comes out. Okay. Now, all right, so here you, I know I had something. I wanted to add the definition of sanitary sewage and you said, um.
That it's defined under sewage.
Right, so sanitary sewage is not necessary. We can take this out.
I think so.
Okay. So, so it doesn't make a difference whether, it says sewage sometimes termed as domestic gross. Okay, so this comes out. Okay, add sanitary there. Bullying. Format.
Yeah, under sewer inspector.
Yes.
His title is water and sewer superintendent. The department is the water and wastewater department.
Okay. Uh, that's a no, okay. That's a no, okay. At this, the headings would just.
Yeah, yeah. And you added an S, it administrates, which is good.
Right. Three, four. Enforcement action. Administrates. Replace the or.
Yeah.
Okay, when I looked at it, I wasn't sure if I was not getting the correct meaning of it. And add the village as a definition.
Yeah.
Okay. The village.
Yeah.
Village.
Yeah.
And S some place. Industrial waste, do we need an S there? Was it? In 94, 97, 4C. You added an S to industrial waste.
Um, I don't think we need, discharge. Let's bring any sewage garbage. I think you can do it, do it or not. Whatever you feel is best.
Anybody? Add the S, just don't add the S?
I would just leave it off, I think it, you know, everybody. Thinks of industrial waste as waste, not wastes, so.
Okay, works. Okay, okay, this was the question of Dig Safely New York.
Right.
And I, I mean, I'm fine with it either way, I looked, we're in 975A. Maria has. Sentence at the end, it says a dig request to dig, to dig safe. Shall be made, and I added make to dig safely New York, which I found was the name of the company.
Yeah.
It's called Dig Safe.
It's called.
Yes.
So just, safe, okay, works for me. Shall be made, said work, performing said work, minimum of 48 hours prior, okay, that's.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Deleting the S, approved works. Why didn't this come up? Okay. There we are. Okay. Composting toilets. Or nuisance odors, that's fine with me. Place building with sewer. Village sewer inspector?
Yes.
Putnam County Board of Health.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but. The Putnam County Health Department or Board of Health, I think, is, is named. Putnam County Department of Environmental Services, something like that, does that ring a bell to anybody?
What I was told was that originally, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation encompassed the Board of Health. But since, but since then, this may have been a few years ago, but since then they are separate entities.
Yeah.
And you can, in the first, I think it was 97-2, you could see that the Putnam County, the Board of Health was crossed out.
Okay, so we're. So we're leaving the Board of Health as it is here?
Yeah.
Okay, delete water and sewer. Okay, installation, water. Notice some spacing there that needs to be changed. And this doesn't go in.
You have to put up, in D, should we put village sewer inspector, just in case someone thinks they have to. Hire their own guy, you know?
Works.
Um, the phrase sewer inspector is found in multiple times. In this document.
Do we want to define it? Or do we want to put village in each time? I can do it either way, we can either.
It is defined, sorry, sorry, it is defined, the sewer inspector. The person appointed by the village board who will be the authorized representative of the village in the administration enforcement of this part one of this chapter.
Okay, so then we don't need anything. So that works. Okay, all right, so, um. So we are down to. The never ending chapter. Okay.
So we're at 979?
We are. The ex state uniform.
That's good.
It is. Okay, I wanted to, should we put this in the uni, in the definition section, you said you don't think so, so we're okay?
I think we're okay.
Okay. Works. Add the uniform code.
I have to step away for just a second, I'll be right back.
Okay. All right. 979C, the connection of the building. See now here it says village sewer inspector, should we take out the word village and, and C?
Yeah.
A dig request. This is added. Next comments, we're down to 9716. All right, so 9717, we're changing the title from industrial waste to inspection prior to connection.
Yes.
No industrial waste of any kind, should we just show? Okay. And then we have industrial waste underneath.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, so we simply separated it. Possible connections. Okay, we're at 9725, uppercase T for sewer treatment. In the absence of co-provision materials, so forth. Upper Mississippi Board of State Sanitary Engineers, yeah, that was interesting, I actually looked that up.
Yeah, P and D wanted that in there.
Yeah, I looked up 10 state standards and it's like, it's all part of that area, which is really interesting.
Yeah, they, they, they said that it is essentially the standard.
Okay. Flushable wipes.
And.
Shall not be flushed.
Now. Steve, you had identified medicines.
Right.
And I can't remember, there it is.
Yes, it's an F, right here.
Yes. Good addition.
It hung in there.
Yes.
Okay.
I got lost again, which, which section are we on?
9726.
Oh, okay.
We're just, just starting 26.
Thank you. Gotcha.
Okay. Then we have, and are. Replace it, S with an uppercase S, replace it T. Replace sewer treatment plant operator with inspector. Yes. T. Inspector. Superintendent with Inspector Treatment Plant Operator. Okay, as we go. Sewer treatment, okay, 9727. Okay, adding interceptor. Interceptor or separator, and yes, I can see.
This, this, this is the only place these terms are used.
Okay.
So it seems to me that it makes more sense to just have them right there.
That's fine.
And it, it explains what it is.
Okay, replace wait one. Plant operator, I gotta go back for a second.
You might want to go back to, in that sentence with interceptor and separator. And. Where it says interceptor trap greases or solid. I, I would like to add your S there, Fran.
Okay.
In the.
Grease, oh, greases or solids, got it. Thank you. Before they enter wastewater disposal, okay. Okay, interceptors available for inspection on demand by the sewer inspector. Code enforcement officer. Okay, that was the addition. Okay, wastewater was just one word, that's okay, and 9731?
Yes.
Okay. Delete water. So we changed it from 24 hours to six hours?
Yes.
Six hour composite. Yes, so this.
Fran, I'm sorry, 97-31, third, third line. With the latest edition of standard methods for the examination of water and wastewater, and then at the beginning of the next line is a comma. So the comma should go after wastewater?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, industrial concern of persons requesting. Okay, there was a. Close parentheses, is that correct? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Unless determined otherwise by the village board, the appointed water and sewer superintendent. A dig request to dig safe. Okay. I added the master fee schedule on 9736D.
Yeah.
Okay. I see where you say bearing proper credentials, in 9737. Should that, should that be in parentheses and not in parentheses, commas?
Uh, I don't think so.
No?
Yeah, I think it's fine as it is.
Okay. Okay, United States Environmental Protection Agency. Safety rules and liabilities. Yeah, this was the part that confused me, um. Because I, I was wondering, it seems like we were just hanging ourselves out to dry here, but. It seems like it's, it's just what needs to be done.
Yeah, they both wanted it included.
Okay, 97, I didn't see the connection with 9730, but does connect to control manholes.
Yeah.
Okay. Bold, entry on a season. Sewer inspector.
It's raining at my house.
Me too, it's pouring here.
Is that why the wind is coming in my window and the curtains are blowing and? Things are probably getting wet. Okay, near state, now, do you want me to take this out, Marie?
Oh, no, Fran, just leave it as.
Leave it as it is?
Yeah.
It's 9739. Okay, yeah, then. Notification on accidental discharge. Be followed, okay, 9740, we're okay?
Yeah.
Let me move down a little bit here.
Should it be of accidental discharge instead of on accidental discharge?
Um, I think it, where are you, 9740?
Yeah.
It was changing, you talking about 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth line down? Sewer inspector describing the causes of the accident, it was changed.
No, I was talking about the title of the section, notification of accidental discharge.
The notification occurs when there is an accidental discharge.
So like on or upon?
Whatever, okay.
Okay, give me. Once, all right, Marie, you added date?
I added a date.
You just shut the windows, we don't get drowned here. No, I can't get up. Oh. Okay. 9741A. And on the application, it should be, application shall indicate the location of the property, the purpose for which the service will be used, and contain the date, name, address, okay. A dig request, I need a two second break. Back. Okay. Marie. Okay, nine, we're at F?
Yeah.
Ninety-seven forty-one F, the master fee schedule, okay?
Yeah.
Ninety-seven forty-two B.
Yes, you're right.
Delete or it, okay. 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 Sewer treatment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Under special permits?
Special permit, yes, it's sewage.
Right.
W A G E. Okay, it's sewage. So it's two.
Yes, it's raining here.
Sewage.
There go your S's again.
I know, right, they just keep getting in my way. Okay, that looks okay. Formerly the Department of Health.
Delete that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we are S. Okay, there go the S's, more S's. Uppercase S, uppercase T. Uppercase S. Uppercase T. Airborne. Okay. S. Okay, now motels. Hotel, should it say, in the ninety-seven fifty-three, the use hotel, dash, hotel, or comma, hotel, how do you want to put that?
How about a hotel, comma, hotel?
Comma, okay. I'd love to have all these things actually in grids. Which we can do, but it just takes a lot of doing later on.
Yeah.
Boarding and lodging houses become overnight accommodations.
Yeah.
One unit per two sleeping rooms, so it used to be a quarter unit, and now it's one unit per two?
Right.
For rental. Okay. Marie, is that a, is that a raise of what the current code is?
Um, the current code had a, if you, it's going, it used to be boarding houses.
No, I hear that the. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It used to be boarding houses, of which we had none.
Right.
And now we have, I'm sorry, overnight accommodations. It's one unit or two sleeping rooms. I don't know that, we didn't have overnight accommodations in the past.
Okay, I was just wondering, the quarter unit for two sleeping units. I was just wondering if things need to be adjusted for some of the places we currently have.
No one, right now, is paying for overnight accommodations.
Okay.
No one is licensed for overnight accommodations.
Okay. Therefore, another whole discussion.
Yes.
Okay, schools comes out. Operated for employees and students.
Schools doesn't come out.
Um, no, in the paragraph with starts cafeterias within manufacturing or industrial plants.
Yes.
Okay.
Schools come out.
Okay.
Because schools, because schools are rated on the number of students. And it's earlier in the, earlier in the list.
Okay, let me just move up for a second here. Now that three? The number three that's sort of hanging there, that belongs to cafeterias?
Yeah.
Right. Does that make more sense?
Yeah.
Any connection to, shall be.
Shall be determined by the village board by resolution.
Got it, okay, got that. Okay. We are at ninety-seven fifty-five, village board show, take out annually, and add from time to time. Sewer rent should be found in the master fee schedule, okay. Okay, replace for with by?
Yeah.
Okay. Delete the word the. Okay, New York State Village Law. New York State Business Corporation Law, I will check that, I thought I had checked it.
Yeah, when I looked it up, I was finding, not New York State Business Law, but just Business Law. Or state, or New York Business Law. Not, 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 not NYS Business Law.
Okay. So just New York Business Law?
Yeah, I think so. New York, New York Business Corporation Law.
Oops, that doesn't work.
You and your S's.
Yeah, I know, they get in my way. Okay, take that. They have Business Corporation Law, okay. That works. Okay, the S, sewer system with an uppercase S.
And it should be sewage system.
Got it.
With an uppercase S, yes.
Connector user, connector user may terminate for no reason the service.
Yeah.
Be by.
You have the full address. Eighty-five Main, that's good.
Fee shall be found in the master fee schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. And the S is sewer, no, that's right, sewer rents.
Yeah.
Sewer, is the term in the definitions plural?
I don't, I don't know that it is, but I believe in the way it's used here should be correct.
Okay. Okay, New York State General Construction Law. Something like dates identified as holidays.
Yeah. As it, it seems to me that what we should say here, as my comments, it's the holidays for employees of the Village of Cold Spring. Having said that. For example, the Highway Department, Friday is, I think, a New York State General Construction Law holiday.
Right.
However, the village employees are working that day. The Highway Department is working that day.
Now, is. Is it determined by not only the fact that our employees are working, but also that the residents, because it's a holiday, may not be expecting somebody to come in and disconnect or whatever?
I think what this is intended to do is to notify the homeowner of the dates when a disconnection can occur. Oh, Fran, leave it as it is, leave it as it is.
Yeah, okay, because I.
Leave it as it is, yeah.
Works, okay, okay. Okay. In fact, okay, let's know it's in fact. Okay, add the phone number with the area code.
Phone number's good. Eighty-five Main Street is good, twice eighty-five Main Street.
Yep. Eighty-five Main Street.
To the attention of the village, yeah.
Are we at the end of this?
Person? Not quite.
Person, okay. Okay, should we require a bank check or money order, issue a bad check exists for the village? I'm not sure if this is already found in each of the chapters. I'm just thinking that if somebody gives us a check that's disordered, we're not going to know it for probably a week, by the time you deposit it at the bank, the bank notifies you back. I mean, we get it to the bank within a day. But by the time it notifies us back, that's, that's a whole, you know, we, we turn somebody's water back on and then found out that the check bounces.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so when the check bounces.
It'll off you.
It, it doesn't pay the bill.
Right, but we've already turned the water on, now do we go and turn the water off again? Or should we just make sure we get the money the first time?
I believe what we'll do is we'll add it to their bill.
Okay, but this is. Okay, let me just rethink this for a second. Okay. This is in response to a notice, so if you're telling me that you're going to shut off my service, and I give you a check, then you're basically not going to shut off the service, then you find out the check has bounced, and then we go through this whole thing again.
So.
Adding the fee, the fee wasn't my issue, it was much of this on-off type of thing. You know, I don't, I don't see that to be such an awful issue to ask for a bank check or a money order, rather than a personal check.
As it turns out, I don't know that the village has ever discontinued service of a sewer.
Right, I was just looking at that, how do you shut off the sewer system?
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Doesn't work, yeah.
Yeah.
Water's different. Input is, input is, is one issue, output is another. You can control input, you can't control output.
You can't have output without input either, so, you're gonna have water there for the sewage to work. So unless they, unless they're collecting rainwater and flushing their toilet with it or something.
I mean, this is, this is interesting, because basically it's all in the same bill. But that's neither here nor there, I mean, we can leave this as it is, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not going to make a difference. Okay. Okay.
So there are two things here. One is the reconnection fee. And this, the other is the deposit fee for reconnection.
Right.
On. There's probably a better way to say it. But given the fact that it's eight thirty-four, I, I'm not sure I can think of a better way to say it. Fran, let's, you and I talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, so ninety-seven fifty-three. I'm writing notes.
Ninety-seven fifty-three.
Two versus three.
Rec, three, right, okay.
Okay. Okay, and then that, other than that, we're almost, we're just about almost done at this point, let me see.
Yeah.
Okay. Add fee, we'll add the fee anyway. And the amount of one hundred.
No.
Okay.
Sorry, you don't want to add the fee.
Right, replacing one with the other. Deleting. Adding from time to time. That is, the only question on this whole chapter is the difference between reconnection fee and deposit fee for reconnection. Other than that, so ninety-seven is, so we have pretty much completed, other than renumbering stuff. I think sixty-four. Oh, sixty-four, no, we have to send the HTRB. Seventy-six, we renumber, ninety-three, we renumber, ninety-seven, we renumber and just make that discussion, we don't renumber, but we discussed that last point. So three chapters down tonight. Nice work.
Yeah.
Do we have anyone else on with us? I can't see.
I see Trevor Knight, but I don't know if.
And, oh, Heidi was here for a while, but I guess she left.
She just dropped off a little while ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Died of boredom.
Sorry?
She died of boredom.
So are there any public comments?
I guess we can unmute Trevor.
Is Trevor raising his hand?
I'm getting no indication that he is.
Okay, then.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is, okay. So. He should be.
Unmuted?
Unmuted.
Well, hi, I just wanted to say hello, I was just listening. I was, again, thank you for all the work that you do, I know this is not the most, you know, gripping thing to do, to go through each, each paragraph by paragraph, but, you know, it's appreciated. And, you know, thank you.
Thanks, Trevor. Thanks for staying through this.
Okay, I, if there are no other public comments, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I just have two questions.
Sorry, yes.
Do we need to do anything to approve the Presbyterian Church's use of Mayor's Park? Or should we wait until next week to approve that?
Well, let's see, of the four of us here, any, any, anyone opposed to doing that? Sorry, I should say, is everyone in favor of doing that?
My only, my only additional question was, what if somebody submits an application to do a party there on a Sunday? Now, I know they're in the morning, but if we get an application for that, they seems, it seems they want to do this every Sunday. It's pretty much, I don't know if there's a beginning or an end to it. So pretty much locks us up, so are they going to be amenable if we say some Sunday you can't do it, because we have somebody who's having a party there? That's my own, that was my own question. I mean, we went through the bathroom zone open, we're not going to open for parking outside.
And it's only an hour, so Carolyn also said, when, when I was emailing her about the use of the restrooms and so forth, that we just don't have the staff to sanitize it. She's like, she'll just send a notice out to the congregants that, you know, that that's not going to be available. If we get a request to use Mayor's Park, and they want to include it earlier, you know, can't we just work around that somehow or other?
Lynn, their, their application, I, I think, identified two hours. It wasn't, it wasn't just one hour.
Yeah, it was a setup and breakdown time or something.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it was from ten thirty to twelve thirty, something like that.
I think so, yeah.
Can't we just work around it if something comes up?
I don't know, you know, if any applications will come up, at this point, I don't think we're, we're going to allow any, I mean, unless it's a family graduation party or a family birthday party, and typically those would be afternoons.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I would assume that we could sell them to, you know, you can't have it until 1 o'clock. I don't know, I mean, that was just, you know, that was just a question I threw out there. I mean, mostly anybody who's using Mayor's Park for like that area for a party would be a village resident. So it's not a case that we're going to like be, you know, losing a ton of money because somebody's going to rent the place, that's not the way it's going to be. So I mean, other than that, I have no issue.
Right.
I don't either.
Okay. Okay, then, I make a motion to approve the Presbyterian Church use of Mayor's Park?
I'll second.
Any comment?
No.
All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, excellent.
Shall I contact Carolyn with, with that approval?
Yes, please, please do that, Lynn, thank you.
I think Jeff has the application in hand too, so.
Okay, then. Sorry, before we adjourn, the next time we review the code, which if we have time on Tuesday of next week, I'd like to go into signs and placards and steep slopes. So, with that, I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Lynn, sorry Fran, you were too quick on that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thanks Michael, take care.